I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes. Good evening. Please note that all councilors are here except Councilor Waterhouse, Councilor Merritt, and Councilor McClary. This is our budget presentation by Public Works. Public Works, take it away.
Good evening. I'm pleased to submit the Public Works operating budget for fiscal year 1920. The proposed budget that I'll be presenting to you this evening assumes the addition of no new programs or changes to the number of full-time employees, and for frame of reference, the number of employees within the department is 35. Prudent fiscal management and operational improvements have allowed for the absorption of some of the material cost increases anticipated during the budget year, and I'll talk in specific detail to some of that as we get a little further on the presentation. Again, the department consists of 35 employees and four divisions, and those four divisions are administration, field operations, fleet operations, and facilities. And the way the presentation is broken out tonight, in the slide presentations you'll be seeing in a moment, administration, field operations, and fleet operations are in one slide deck, and facilities is separate. Going forward, that'll all be consolidated, but I just want to point that out to you so it doesn't seem confusing as we start going through it. The mission of the Public Works Department is to provide quality operations, maintenance, and facility services to the town of Bloomfield, and my vision for the department is to be an industry leader and model for what it means to be professional, capable, and certified Public Works Department. In comparison to the last fiscal year, the budget I'm proposing for fiscal year 2019-2020 is 5.256 million, and this represents a 1.2 percent, or approximately $62,000 increase over the previous fiscal year. So I want to emphasize that because I don't want it to seem confusing when I go from the first slide deck where I'm talking about three of the pillars to the last one. Everything in total, the entire budget presentation that I'm giving tonight, only amounts to a $62,000 increase. My top three goals for fiscal year 1920. One is general townwide infrastructure improvements. Two would be to optimize asset management efforts to include resource monitoring, urban forestry, shade tree inventory, and condition assessments for the central business district, and all-town rights-of-way and select properties. And my third goal would be regulatory compliance, and that's facility environmental improvements and benchmarking across our entire portfolio. Top four challenges I anticipate for the upcoming year. One is the implied increases to core functions, basically making sure that we have a sustainable maintenance model and the funds necessary to support that. Two would be regulatory changes directly impacting staff and budget. Third challenge would be prioritization and funding of repairs and replacement of crumbling infrastructure. And then the fourth challenge, which we're on our way to eliminating, and that is operating out of a non-compliant facility. This challenge, as you know, is being reduced with the completion of the Public Works Facility Project, which is planned for completion later this year. I want to speak for just a moment about variances specifically from last year to this year. In general, the increases to this year's proposed Public Works and Facility operating and management budget fall into four main categories. Regulatory...
Mr. Lawler?
Yes, sir.
Could you, before you start, just give us a little quick overview of who was involved in the budget process?
Who was involved in the budget process?
Who was involved in the budget process, yeah.
Well, my entire staff is involved in it. My fleet manager, Mike Skako, Dan Carter, my operations manager, Chris Greenlaw, my facilities manager, and we receive input, obviously, from other staff members as well for specific projects or programs.
Okay. Thank you.
So with respect to variances, in general, the increases to this year's proposed Public Works and Facilities operating and maintenance budget fall into four main categories: regulatory, contractual, utilities, and material usage demand. All four of these areas are outside the department's ability to control or are directed. When considering all these areas of increase, they more than account for the department's increase over last year's budget. The sum total of these four areas' increase is 100 percent, which means that other areas of savings within the proposed budget compensate for a large portion of the increase over last year, and I'll give some specifics. First area is fuel. Fuel includes the unit cost increase by the low-bid provider for both diesel and gasoline. The increase is due to the anticipated unit cost increase for gasoline only. The current pricing for gasoline has decreased from last year. However, the pricing expires on December 31st of this year, and a unit cost increase should be expected. The combined fuel line item accounts for increases of $6,200 over last year, so the budget increase for fuel alone represents 10 percent of the total increase over last year's budget. Under the category of contractual increases, these cost increases are reflected in a few different areas within the budget. The first budget area affected is full-time payroll, including overtime, and taxes, which shows an increase of approximately $42,000. Other budget areas affected as part of contractual requirements are uniform and clothing, meals, and lease payments, which show a collective increase of $1,400. The total increase for everything under the contractual line is $44,000, and that represents about 70 percent of the increase over last year. And then finally, the utility line item. This line item reflects the benefit of improved utility management via the Amaresco recommended improvements minus the annual cost increase of utility consumption. With the advent of two new buildings, and derived consumption rate has actually increased. Additionally, two existing buildings have increased hours and days of use in support of additional programs. These increased rate costs, coupled with the proposed assumption, or, I'm sorry, consumption increase, are reflected in electricity, which is up about $16,000, natural gas, which is up approximately $17,000, and water, which is up approximately $9,000 in their respective budget line items. The budget increase due to all utilities is approximately $42,000, which amounts for about 68 percent of the increase over last year. So with those three areas of increase, we've also had areas of savings or decrease. Decreases in the budget from last fiscal year were realized in the following areas: education and training is down $21,000 due to the adjusted time period for the apprentice program, due in part to union opposition and our inability to start the program. Two would be modified environmental services contract is down approximately $3,800, and that's a revision in scope of work. And the next item would be building maintenance, which is down approximately $19,000, and that's due to reduced vendor maintenance for warranty items for some of our new buildings. So because major, well, total new construction for 330 Park Avenue and modifications to 21 Southwood Road, that $19,000 that we would normally do items which are going to be covered under the first-year warranty for those buildings, so that money is able to be taken out of the budget this year because they're covered under warranty for the project, but we could and should expect that those warranty dollars will have to go back in for the following year. So that savings and decrease in total is approximately $49,000, and that represents 79 percent of the increase. So in summary, the total budget increase over last year resulting from these areas is approximately $62,000, or 1.2 percent. And with that, I'd like to get right into the first slide deck, which is Public Works. And again, this is administration, field operations, and fleet operations. So the first slide you have before you is the four-year comparison. And the takeaways from this slide, if you look to the far-right column, you'll see the 33 percent decrease in education, training, and travel. That's that reduction that I talked about, and by the way, when we get to the variance slide, I'll just hit the high points here, and we get to the variance slide, we can talk a little bit more detail about these. That's where you'll see that 33 percent drop is the education, training, and travel reduction I talked about earlier. And then fuel is a 6.9 percent increase, and that is a direct result of fuel prices and consumption going up. But as you can see, when you look at the four-year comparison, there hasn't been significant changes year over year. There have been some adjustments that we made to different things. We put some account centers more accurately into specific areas, but there hasn't been any major changes. If you go to the next slide, it's the two-year comparison, which is a more detailed breakout of this proposed year versus the previous year. And again, you see the same far-right column, you'll see the same 33 percent reduction in education and training, and the same increase in the 6.9 percent for fuel. There is a slight increase in the technical line item, the 1.8 percent, and that reflects the addition of another fleet vehicle to the pool, town hall pool, so that's what accounts for that increase. So if we go to the next slide, this is the detail slide, and it basically highlights those significant areas of increase or decrease. And again, the decreases are on the administration side, so you had a drop of 10 percent, or roughly $3,800, from contractual services, and that was the change in scope for the environmental services contractor. So it's us tightening up the scope of work that they do, but also as we get better at some of our environmental monitoring, we're able to cut back on some of the testing that we're doing, and that's what you see reflected there. The education and training line item, that's the reduction in funding for the apprentice program. We go down to field operations, and here's where you'll start to see some of the increases. Full-time payroll is up approximately $8,300. Now, it should be noted that in the presentation I give here tonight and the numbers that I'm referring to do not speak to cost of living adjustments. Those, I understand, and were briefed by the finance director, are carried elsewhere within the budget. The increase you see here is solely related to step increases, that a person in a particular position, if they're by contract, if they do a step, the step will reflect here, but the cost of living will reflect in another line item that has already been presented. Also, under field operations, overtime, so the increase that you see there...
One second.
Yes, sir.
So, there's no way for you to project what that cost of living increase may be? Because this is something that I know I want to touch base with Phil on and Carrie, because the budget that we're looking at really doesn't reflect the true cost if we're not factoring that in.
Well, my understanding is it does, it just doesn't show it here. Is that correct, Carrie?
It's not written off by the term.
Right. So it's a line item?
The COLA gross COLA costs, which I'm not going to disclose, are in the fixed cost line item for the total budget. So the total town budget reflects what we anticipate at this point in time to be a settlement.
But what you see here will just be step increases. And I was just getting ready to say the same thing, so if you look in the center of the slide, there under field operations, I talk about overtime being an approximate $12,000 or 10 percent increase. That's based on a five-year average, so what we do for the planning of overtime is we look at our winter, spring, and summer programs. We program out how much time we need for the different efforts. Obviously, winter is one that we don't plan as much for, as we plan some and react mostly, but the step increases and the increase overtime for the last five years is what's resulted in that number being bumped up.
Mr. Lawler?
Yes, sir.
Question under the administration, I see in the budget book deduction of $19,000 for the cadet program?
Correct.
Is that the entire program?
No, so good question. What we did this year is rather than assume funding for July 1, we assumed that we would start the program later in the year, and that's quite honestly a reflection of the town's inability to get support from the union to begin the program sooner. We had been negotiating with the union to try to initiate the program. We had gotten a little bit of resistance, I think there needs to be some more discussions about it. So rather than have it bear out in the budget as an expense that I realistically don't think we're going to be able to start it on July 1, so I thought it was best to delay that and start, and that would also is reflected in reduction in budget. So that's what that number is.
And in your opinion, this is a worthy program that we should be doing?
It's a worthy program that we were encouraged to do from the council, so yes.
Really?
Yeah.
So this is, we're happy to have the apprentice program, thank you for the encouragement.
So, I just want to follow up on my colleague's point. So what are you projecting that we may implement that?
This is based on six-month funding, so we figured a half a year.
Half a year?
Yep.
Okay.
And then, in the bottom of that slide, we're talking about variances under fleet operations. And again, full-time payroll, that is a function of the step increases, as well as difference between, we had a targeted dollar amount set aside for the fleet manager position, we didn't know what that salary was going to be, it had been a placeholder for a while. The difference there is the final cost of the person that was actually hired, so that resulted in a bump up, and that's what you'll see reflected there. Under other contractual services, there's a $12,000 increase proposed there, and that is for fleet location and monitoring services. One of the things that operationally we've discovered we are in need of is the ability to better track during emergency operations. Now, granted, the majority of our emergency operations are weather-related, although not always weather-related, we don't at any given point in time know the telemetry, the location or the telemetry on our vehicles, and we really need to know that. In order for us to be as efficient and as responsive as we ought to be, we need to have the ability to track it. And we went out and we searched, and we found a government services contract that provided us a remarkably low price at $12,000, quite honestly, that will allow us, I'll put it in winter terms because we're still in winter season now, it allows us to know the location of the vehicle, it allows us to know whether the plow up or plow is down, whether the spinner's on or the spinner is off, and it gives us some data back on the vehicle. So if the vehicle is running poorly, we will get alerts on that before the vehicle actually breaks down and has to come out of service. So what this means to us is when we have a situation where, whether it's an emergency situation or whether it's just a winter storm situation and we need to respond, we could tell by use of this software which vehicle is closest to respond with the right type of equipment on it. We could tell by breadcrumb trailing, if the plows were down, we could tell what roads were plowed and when they were plowed, versus, you know, we get calls from residents all the time, oh, my road hasn't been plowed, and then we get into a discussion about, well, when was the last time we were there, what's the nearest truck? This allows us to much, much better manage that. And, of course, and as the emergency situations, scenarios that you play in your minds, you know, become more and more involved, this information becomes that much more and more important.
So, I'm sorry, can I ask a question about that? This is included in the budget, or it's not?
It is.
It is?
Yep.
So how does that relate to the capital improvement number that was dropped, fleet management software?
It was dropped from capital, and it appears here as an annual O and M cost instead.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. And then the last item on the variance spreadsheet under fleet operations is gas and diesel, and again, it comes back to what I'd said earlier. That's approximately $13,000 increase, and that's based on a five-year average, driven primarily by winter operations. I mean, that is the big season that impacts it the most, and it also involves the increase, the anticipated increase in fuel costs for the second half of the year. So again, just wanted to emphasize, no new positions, no new programs save that software. So subject to your questions, I'd like to move on to the capital and maybe add a little bit more depth to some of the questions that were raised. So if you, if I invite your attention to the center column, the one highlighted in the yellow, you'll see that there are six projects that were recommended moving forward from the town manager's review, and those are specifically to the Public Works Initiative: neighborhood tennis court removal, Riley Building demolition, sidewalk repair and replacement, Public Works heavy equipment replacement, roadway improvements, and general park maintenance. Those are the six items that were forwarded to you for consideration. And I can go into a little bit of detail if you'd like on each of these, or if you have specific questions. I guess we'll start with, Chris, can I have a look? We'll start with the neighborhood tennis court removals. So I'm just referring back to notes that you may or may not have with you. These were the submittal sheets that were presented with the budget. So this request for $75,000 funding during fiscal year 1920 is to address the removal and repurpose of neighborhood parks and tennis courts at Senate Farms, removal of tennis court and replacement with a half-port basketball court, at Reservoir 3, the removal of the tennis courts, at Castlewood, the removal of tennis courts, at Maplewood, the removal of tennis courts, and at Revere Drive, the removal of tennis courts. This request follows the current Parks Master Plan for reduction on townwide tennis courts, and I believe also supports the plan of conservation and development. Now, one thing I want to point out here with this, because this is a good example of a capital project where Public Works and Leisure Services come together, so this speaks to the difference. And there's another one as well that I'll talk to, General Park Maintenance. There's a difference between what Leisure Services does with respect to parks and what Public Works does, and we draw the line, if you will, between program and non-program. So if there's something that is programmatically driven, it'll be presented by Dave. So Dave and I sit down when we build the capital budgets, we discuss what needs to get done, and he decides what he takes and what I take, and then we present it. So we don't build these in a vacuum. But what you'll see here, and what you'll see later with General Park Maintenance, is these are things that we specifically do. So we'll remove the tennis courts, later you'll hear me talk about, we'll fix broken fence, we will repair or paint things that need to be painted, or repair things that are damaged, but if there's a new playscape that goes up, Dave will do that. If there's a new programmatic area space, pickleball court, Dave will do that. So if it's programmatic and it's new, you'll generally find it under his direction with our assistance, but if it's something that's repair, maintenance, or removal, you'll generally see it here, and two of those I'll speak to as well.
Could you tell me how many tennis courts will be remaining in the town, and what is the estimated cost for maintaining those tennis courts?
I cannot answer that question. Dave would be the better person to tell you how many courts we have and how many we will have when all is removed. That information is readily available in the Parks Master Plan, I just don't have it with me right now, I'm afraid.
Madam Mayor, yeah, and I just want to answer Council Marshal Neely's question, because when Dave was here last week, we were actually looking at the Parks Master Plan, and if my memory serves me correctly, there were 17 current courts, and we are reducing 12 to leave five at the Park Road location.
So did we talk about how much of a cost to maintain the ones that are still going to be here?
I assume that will be, the ones that will be left, I assume would be in the maintenance cost, but I don't...
Yeah, we don't have a separate breakout for maintenance of those costs. I could pull something together for you, but that's not a number I have available right now.
It's okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Say, John, I just wanted to ask for the courts where you're not replacing it with, like the Senate Farms, instead of a half-basketball court.
Right.
So the ones that you're just taking down, what does go there? You just...
So that's a good question, I should have covered that. It depends. In the case of Maplewood, the plan is to peel off the courts and loam and seed the area so it'll be grassed, and it could be available for whatever they decide they want to do in the future. In areas where it's not as visible, we, the court over at Senate Farms, isn't it? No, not Senate.
Castlewood.
Castlewood. I'm saying, the first one I spoke, I apologize, was Mallard. Castlewood, we would remove the fencing, we would remove the pavement, and then we would just let the, we would let the area go to seed. So we basically wouldn't put topsoil back, because it's a, it's a kind of an undeveloped, unused area, which is why the courts are being removed. So it just is a matter of whether, if it's a high-traffic, high-visibility area, we would loam and seed it, otherwise, we wouldn't.
Okay, and those costs would be included in this figure, right? 75K?
Correct.
Okay.
And I should point something else out as well. So one of the other things that we're doing when we move forward with these is we'll look to peel the asphalt off, and we will bring it back to our yard, and we will look to crush it, recycle it, and reuse it. So we try to make use of the materials rather than simply dispose of them, so I thought I would share that with you. The next item on the list, as you look down in that yellow column, is the Riley Building There was a, we've got some estimates together to do the demolition on this building. I just want to point out to the council that if a decision were made to not demolish the building, then there needs to be costs put aside to develop a cost center for the maintenance of the building, because right now we don't have that. There are things, and I'm hoping we can have a discussion in more detail at another time outside the budget session, where we can talk about the costs that are associated with it and the things that are in the building, but there's a lot that goes into the potential if there's a decision to potentially reuse that building. The next item is sidewalk repair and replacement. And that's $50,000 for that. What I wanted to share with you regarding sidewalk repair and replacement, the total cost to repair all fair, poor, or failed-rated sidewalks. Now, we have a firm, and I'll refer to them also later when we talk about pavement, Beta. Beta is a consulting engineering firm that we've been working with. They help us with our asset management. They go through and assist us annually to inspect, assess, and rate every single road and every single piece of sidewalk every year. We then rank-order them based on either the surface rating of it or the cost-benefit value, you know, if it's a collector road, it's going to get a slightly higher rating because more people use it than a cul-de-sac, that kind of thing. So we look at it through both of those prisms, but we look at all of our sidewalks and we look at all of our roads. In the case of sidewalks, the things that we, the thing that we identified is our primary focus is the removal of trip hazards. So before we get into the discussion or the next step in my mind of replacing sidewalks that are either fair, poor, or failed, we need to remove all the trip hazards, and that's currently what we're doing. To remove all trip hazards townwide without any new sidewalks, this is just what exists, is approximately $300,000. So the $100,000 that we already have available, we're already working on it. Dan's putting out a purchase order to start down that road, but at $100,000 a year, if we get $100,000 a year, that's a three-year plan just to remove the trip hazards. If we were deciding to do and replace all fair, poor, or failed sidewalks, you're looking at $1.8 million, and at $50,000 a year, that would take you 35 years. So, and I don't throw that number out to shock you, I just want to give you a perspective on, one, how we analyze them and assess them, two, how we prioritize them, trip conditions first, and then, third, what the big dollar amount is for the next step going forward.
Yes, John, question. I guess you're telling me that in this town, and something may be new for me, that the town is responsible for replacing and repairing all the sidewalks. I used to work in the city of Hartford, and it was a property owner's responsibility, as I recall, unless it was a town-owned piece of property.
We could assess for the replacement, yes. So the maintenance of the sidewalk, the clearing of the sidewalk, is the homeowner's responsibility, but the replacement of the sidewalk is, as I understand it, the town's responsibility. Now, we could sit down and we could review and/or modify the ordinances to clarify that or change that, but right now, the replacement of the sidewalks is a responsibility the town has taken.
Okay.
And did I mention assessments?
We could assess.
So, you could do... So you could do, we could, and I'm sure you did it in Hartford because I did it in the cities that I worked in, is the municipality can go in and make a capital improvement for utility, water, wastewater, or sidewalks, and assess the property owner. So there's a, a cost based on the, the cost of the project, and in the case of a sidewalk, it might be the town pays half and the homeowner pays half for every foot of, linear foot of frontage that, that the property has. So there's different formulas, but it would be something that we would have to take a look at, and you could always move forward that way.
I wasn't suggesting that, I was just wondering what our policy was.
It's more ordinance-driven.
Yeah. I also was wondering if, if you had, if the council, in its wisdom, decided that there should be twice as much done for sidewalk repair in the following year, do you have the capacity to do it?
We could. So right now, our capacity and our focus ought to be on trip hazard removal until we get all of them done. And we've found a firm who can, who will come out and, and use a particular technology to basically shave off the differences, and that's-
Grinding process?
Well, some grind, but also some others use saws, and they'll, and they'll cut horizontally, they'll, they'll shave it off. That's, that would be, that's the approximate $300,000 first step in sidewalk. And then the $1.8 million is to replace in total anything that's rated fair, poor, or failed.
Thank you.
So, yeah, I just want to continue with that a little, trying to, to understand it completely. Is an evaluation, well, I guess, I certainly understand why we would be concerned with trip hazard, but it seems like, it seems like two things should tie into that with the fair, poor, and what, failed?
Failed.
Failed sidewalks. One is, if there are fair, poor, and failed sidewalks with trip hazards in them, is it just, is it just better, I mean, do we, do we reduce costs by dealing with some of those sidewalks? And that would take care of the trip hazards in and of themselves. And I guess, secondly, it seems like some of these things, you know, we're looking at abstract sort of characteristics of the sidewalks themselves, and it seems like this should be core, the, the level, the areas we, the activity level of fixing this stuff, repairing this stuff should be somewhat highly correlated with the activity levels. So, for example, if there are failed, if there is a failed sidewalk that is near the center of town or out on the Blue Hills retail area or something like that, where we would like to generate a lot of foot traffic, and there's a trip hazard out on, you know, name some, you know, artery street that's far back, are we prioritizing any of that?
So kind of in a reverse order, the answer is yes, we are prioritizing. And yes, we are looking at things of, you know, what's closest to Central Business District, what's closest to areas of, or locations of congregation. We'll look at all of those things. But the, the, the big step back, and the reason why I presented it the way I did, I feel as though the trip hazards present us as a, as a corporation, the greatest risk. And if anyone were to get injured, it would be best for us to be able to say that we've identified trip hazards and we remove them. So is it possible that we're removing a trip hazard today, and four or five years from now, we might be replacing that entire sidewalk? Yes. But I think the immediate risk for small dollars, it'd be better for us to go in and be able to take all those trip hazards off, and then do an assessment on the remaining sidewalks that are poor, failed, or, or, or fair condition. Because quite honestly, another thing to think about is, we might find that there's a sidewalk with one of those categories ratings that maybe doesn't need to be there anymore, doesn't connect to anything. So maybe rather than repair it, we just, we just take it out.
Yeah, a couple of side notes, Kevin. On one of our neighbors, at one time in my past, I was on the Loss Control Committee for the Connecticut and Local Risk Management Agency Assurance Company. And the, the largest community with the largest number of trip hazard claims was West Hartford. And to reduce losses with the insurance entity, they went to West Hartford and started to talk with them about setting up a sidewalk replacement program in order to reduce the, the claims that they were getting on sidewalk trips and, and losses. And this was maybe twelve, fifteen years ago. It was averaging in West Hartford about $250,000 a year in, in claims. And so West Hartford started to put aside some money in their capital budget to do exactly what, what we're doing. But they, they then canceled the program and, and decided because of the premium increases that they were being charged because of the number of losses on the sidewalks, they decided not to insure anymore with, with KIRMA. Another factor, and I think John just brought it up, is that ASHTO, the American Society of, of Street and Highway Officials, basically says you need to have, the, the threshold for sidewalks is twelve pedestrians an hour. And I would submit to you that most of our sidewalks generally don't generate anywhere near that amount of traffic. And so we may want to start looking at an analysis of whether we want to keep all the sidewalks that we have or actually pull them up. I mean, these are things that we really haven't gotten into or investigated, but they may mitigate significant costs for the town down the road, so.
I just have one, one, one follow-up remark on that, I mean, which I, this is all very good information. And I think that's the kind of sort of cost benefit and future-looking plan we need to look at. And the only thing I would take exception to with what, what your response was, I think when you said the trip hazards, you said small dollars. And I, I guess I don't think $300,000 is small dollars.
Well, compared to the replacement at two mil, roughly two million.
I, I understand, but I think that the, I think that the feeling of the council overall when talking about the budget and, and putting money into sidewalks, and last year, we put an extra $50,000 into sidewalks, was that we were going to get replacements and sidewalks that people could be proud of, you know, aesthetically and, and walk on and all that. And it just seems like the, I, I, I'm not sure this was, this is sort of the intent of the money, and I'm not saying that's not what we should do with it because I understand the liability issues and insurance premium and everything else. I just, it's, it's another factor to take into consideration. Thanks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to follow up on something that the town managers just said and tweaked my interest, the concept of take, tearing up sidewalks is somewhat mind-boggling, but is that something that we are looking at with our Complete Streets Initiative? Because that's some way that it might be handled.
I don't know if that's included in the Street, Complete Streets Initiative. I'm not necessarily recommending it, I'm just saying that maybe it's an area of future inquiry in terms of evaluating the sidewalks, where they start, where they end, what the local, if you look at Bloomfield in terms of its housing, the majority, as we all know, of Bloomfield's housing, the, was originally started growing out of Hartford on the north end, and it's really post-World War II housing, small capes and, and ranches, maybe one-car garage. Because at the time, people only had one car, if that, you know, or they used public transportation. So the sidewalks in that area of town may be in a different category than, say, sidewalks on the other parts of town where you have an auto-centric focus, okay? And, and we haven't really looked at that. And I'm just thinking that maybe in terms of longer-term planning, we should, we should be looking at that. We also need to look at the width, okay? A lot of the old sidewalks are three feet, maybe four feet, but if you want to have countervailing walking space or even bikeways, you might want five or six feet, or, I mean, eight feet is what the trails are usually, a minimum for the trail widths and whatnot. So that becomes an issue on rebuilding, you know? If we just go in and rebuild what's already there versus looking at an area and deciding to expand the, the width of the sidewalk, these haven't been really looked at that way. If you, if you were to go in and say, we want to upgrade the sidewalks, you know, the $1.8 million, and maybe John can answer this, I'm assuming that's just replacement of what's there. Do we really want to, to replace what's there, or do we want to expand it in some areas?
And, and quite honestly, the other thing to keep in mind, too, with regard to that cost is, do we want to put back the sidewalk in the exact location into the same dimensions it is? A lot of the sidewalk that we have in town, and you probably know this from walking around, is it's four-foot wide sidewalk. You know, we really ought to give consideration to a wider sidewalk than that. That would obviously impact the numbers. So all of these things will go into the decision-making process, you know, widening, removal, relocating, two sides or one side versus both sides. But, but again, I, my recommendation is that we start with the reduction and removal of the trip hazards is our number-one priority while we develop more of a plan toward what we want to do next. And do things like review the ordinances and review the Complete Streets and review, you know, the, the regulations guarding, guiding development to see if we could put language in there that, you know, gives us better sidewalks going forward.
John, on the same topic, I was going through the budget book, and I was looking for some sort of rating of our sidewalks and road, roadways. In your opinion, right now, how would you rate our current infrastructure, in your opinion? And what would we need to do to get to a level that is respectable?
So I brought some of that information with me specifically for the roads. I didn't bring the sidewalk numbers with me. Did I give you those, Dan? So I'm sort of getting a little bit ahead of myself because that's two items down, but I'll, I'm happy to cover it now. Our road surface rating, our RSR rating for our roads, is currently running at seventy. Our baseline when we started, when I started the program-
Can you explain just for some of us who don't understand what seventy means?
Sure. So it's seventy out of a possible one hundred.
Oh, okay.
Is how we score it, zero, zero to one hundred. And depending on where you fall on that spectrum, you, given where any specific road falls on that spectrum, will decide what kind of repair it gets done. The worst condition the road has, it doesn't lend itself to ceiling or crack ceiling or, or cape ceiling. You end up, if it's so bad, you have to do a total reconstruction. So depending on where a road's rating is, will determine what technology and what cost is, has to get applied to repairing it. But on average, our, our road surface rating townwide is at seventy. When I began the program back in 2013, we were at sixty-eight. And the first couple of years that we did it, we had a significant bump up. But quite honestly, we've trailed off just a bit. Now, in the capital budget request that was sent forward this year, I was requesting approximately 1.46 million, and I believe what you see before you is 1.1 million. What's significant about that is, at, at that number, we will continue on the slightly, you know, downward slope that we're on. So if we're, the, the dollar amounts that I'm recommending are just enough to keep us slightly above level. So we will not significantly increase, but our road surface rating won't decrease, and that's in present-day dollars. But at 1.1 million, I would expect our RSR will slightly decline over time.
What is that, over the next five years, or what is that projection?
It'll start, it'll start degrading immediately. I mean, how quickly will go from seventy to sixty-five? I didn't run the calculations on that, I could. At one million, I've got a chart here, it's a little bit hard to read, but at one, at one million dollars a year in present-day dollars, our road surface rating would drop to about sixty-eight by 2030.
So, so to that point, where should we be? I know we're seventy right now, where should we be? And if you don't have the correct fund in, you're saying we should, we can possibly drop back to sixty-five percent?
Well, that's townwide, keep in mind.
Correct, correct.
Yeah. Yeah. My recommendation is, at the, at the rates that I had placed in the capital budget, it was going to keep us just slightly above degradation. So we would go from seventy to seventy-one or seventy-two. So what I was looking to do was basically not lose ground and not necessarily stay even, I was looking to just, you know, ever so slightly increase. And that's what we had been projecting, and that's what we had done from 2000 to 13 to now, when we went from basically sixty-eight to seventy. So we, we went up two points in, what, six years? You know, at, at that trajectory, I think we'd be fine. Because keep in mind, you know, as roads, as, as we continue to fund at that level, roads continue to, you know, fall into disrepair and fall off. So it's not like, you know, you're going to just keep going until you run off the chart at a hundred. It doesn't quite work that way. But the funding levels that were requested in the budget are, are intended to keep us just above decreasing numbers, quite honestly.
John, I'm curious about sidewalks that may be owned by the state and whether or not there's any state funding that can help. And I'm thinking about the Blue Hills area or something where we can cut costs by-
I'm smiling because the state doesn't think they own sidewalks. A sidewalk in a state right-of-way, in my opinion, is a state sidewalk, in the state's opinion, it's our sidewalk. So they may install it as part of construction, but the maintenance, repair, and replacement of it is not their responsibility, it's our responsibility, or the homeowner's responsibility.
Yes, John, quick question, and this is, put it in perspective. Do you have an idea what, you say our, our RSR rating is seventy, what about our neighboring towns?
So, good question. There are other towns that use the exact same process, exact same firm, exact same logarithms that we do. Legerd is at eighty-two, eighty-three. Simsbury is at eighty-two point six. Griswold is at sixty-eight. We're at seventy. Granby's at seventy-two. Stonington's at seventy-five, and Bristol's at seventy-six. So you could see there's a, there's a broad spectrum of the size of the community, some are rural, some are more, some are more urban. But what's, what's good about those comparisons is it's exactly the same technology and same process that we use.
Oh, do you assume that these are the upper end of the list, is it, or this is sampling?
These are, these are just a sample of people that I pulled that are closest to us that use the exact same process. So I, I mean, I could have compared to, say, like a, a West Hartford, but if West Hartford uses a different technology than we use, then it's, it's not a, it's not a straight apples-to-apples. So I, I chose to go with these because it, it's exactly the same. So if there's no more questions on sidewalk, I'll move down to the next item on the capital list, which is equipment replacement for Public Works. And that's being proposed at approximately $210,000, and the request was for 421. The next item we started to talk about already was the roadway improvements. It was requested at 1.46, and it's being recommended forward to you at 1.1 million. And then the last item is parks, park maintenance. I referred to this a little bit earlier at $35,000. This request for funding during fiscal year 1920 is to address the general and annual recurring maintenance issues with regard to things like fence repair, tree trimming, tree removal, grounds maintenance, and timber rail installation. These are non-programmatic. I, I described the difference between programmatic and non-programmatic earlier. These are non-programmatic park improvements, programmatic improvements, placecapes, equipment, playgrounds, mulch, signage, et cetera. Those will be covered and should be covered by Dave Malesco in the Leisure Services capital proposal. And those are managed by him.
Excuse me, but technically, these are capital purchase, you call it maintenance?
These are, these are capital purchases, yes.
And that's for the, whatever it takes to fix up that park without having, it's not the labor-
Right, so, that's correct, yep. Presumably, we would be able to do this work internally to be able to make the dollars stretch that much further. And this is for all twenty-six parks, you know, 1,000 of the 2,000 acres that are under that park umbrella. Well, 25,000 is the capital number.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. John, I just wanted to ask about those culvert bridge projects. I thought they were part of the capital improvement plan that Public Works would do.
Those are under engineering.
Oh, they're under engineering, okay, because I thought they were there. And then-
I, I did have a storm order request for some non-culvert storm order issues that we were having, but they are not on the list, no.
Okay. Then I wanted to ask about some of the projects that didn't make it into the capital improvement plan.
Sure.
Like the Prosser interior refresh and the Prosser entrance parking, I think that's parking, sidewalk, site work. Could you just, what, what are those two? What would they involve?
Give me a second, I'm just going to see if I can find my, my detail sheet.
One is 55K for, for the interior and- One is 55K for the interior, and the entrance is 145.
I've got them in priority order, so if you'll bear with me as I flip through, I'll find them. So this is, the one for 145, this is the number one, Tungus Avenue, which is Prosser, the entrance parking site work improvements. Project would complete the, the merge of the Prosser Library lot and the adjacent former Masonic Home lot, you know, that lot that's on the north side that's not paved, and would entail creating permanent parking spaces by reclaiming, fine-grading, and paving the upper lot. The rear entrance area would be reconstructed to properly tie in with the sidewalk and parking lots to the building inside terrace. Work will conform to ADA standards. Since the demolition of the Masonic Home, the lots have never been fully integrated and lack proper vehicle and pedestrian traffic flow, as well as storm order runoff. The surface of the lot is not paved and gets mess during inclement weather, and the current grade of the lot is not conducive to safe travel. So that's what, that's what was included in that one. This project involves the cosmetic refresh to the interior of Prosser Library and would consist of ceiling grid replacement on the lower level, painting throughout, and limited restroom renovation. The splined ceiling, which exists in the lower levels and poor shape and limits accessibility for maintenance and wiring. The ceiling will be replaced with a traditional acoustical ceiling grid. But those projects are not before you.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just going back to the parks a bit, because I, I, and you probably talked to Dave Malesco after he was in with Leisure Services last week.
I did not.
Oh, you did not, okay. Because he asked the question, the question was asked about park maintenance, you know, how much were we spending? And I guess I want to, I want to, how much were we spending and was it enough, basically? So I want to come back first to the 35,000 and completely understand that, because you said, I thought that, I thought I was getting a distinction that the 35 was capital improvements to the parks that were sort of restorations, such as new fencing, et cetera. But not, so then not the actual maintenance, the activity of going out and maintaining, you know, mowing grass, maintaining trails, or doing whatever. Then you've made some comment, I think, at the end of Counselor Mann's question about 25,000 versus 35? Or do, are you, did you just make a slip and say 25,000 rather than 35?
I meant 35.
Okay, that, no, that's why, that's why I didn't understand. Okay. So, so I think the question that was asked was, are we doing enough maintenance of our parks and not just refurbishing the fences, but trail maintenance, for example, in Wilcox Park? There's a plan for Farmington River Park, obviously there's a lot of improvements, but there is a trail there now. Where is, where is that located? Would that just be in your field ops, or?
Those would be in, I guess, in the field ops O and M numbers. So they're, they're not here, they're not reflected in this capital number. So the recurring maintenance-
Right.
Lawn mowing, things like that that happen in the parks is, is, you know, part and parcel to the O and M budget itself.
And, and you have, you don't really have a good even estimate of what that is?
Well, I know that, I know that the grounds maintenance is approximately 12 to 15% of our total budget. So if you took everything-
All the grounds, but that includes like Town Hall and-
Correct.
Okay, okay. So, and maybe, this is not a number you're going to have tonight or something, but I think what we were asking Mr. Malesco was, is the amount we're spending on maintaining this stuff sufficient? Because one of the, one of the comments we get is that the park, some of the parks are not in good shape, and not just the capital piece. On the other hand, as Counselor Mann has pointed out a lot of times, we also need to think of what services we can provide and, and all of that. So I guess, I guess one thing that would be very helpful for us is to have a better idea of, you know, functionally, how much time, you know, how much, how much of our effort, and that ultimately, you know, correlates with money, I guess, and, and budget, how much of our budget is going to the maintenance of our parks? How much is going to the maintenance of the, of the public, of public grounds like Town Hall, the green, et cetera? How much is going to, you know, these various repair things? We've got the capital cost. I guess that does include the labor here, because we hire outside consultants to do it, right?
Correct. If we hire them, it'll, it'll include it, yes.
Okay, okay. So I, I think that that kind of, a little more of that kind of analysis would be helpful.
Well, the, based on the information that we have, so we, we don't have the ability to, an employee doesn't clock in and clock out of every programmatic area. It would be great if we could, because we can have a lot greater detail. But I can tell you with, with fair amount of certainty that our, our grounds line item is that 12 to 16% of the total budget. What I would want to do is maybe sit down and have a discussion about what are the services that we're currently, that are perceived to not being, not occurring, or things that we want to do, and then we can put cost to them. So really, I think you pointed to it earlier, it needs to be a discussion about what is the level of service that we want to achieve? Can we do with what we have? If we can, then what's the cost in, in time dollars or man-hours to get there? And then the decision is, do we, do we do it or do we not do it? So I, I think that would be a good place to, a good place to start. And I think it's an important place to start, particularly as we start talking about things like these trails that are coming online, things that, that didn't exist as part of our core functions. Not to say that grounds maintenance wasn't something we did, but that particular grounds maintenance wasn't something we did, and now the expectation is to do it, but there was never discussion about what additional resources do we need to, to take that on. I, I think we need to have those sustainable maintenance discussions.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. John, I'm looking at the Public Works field operation, and I'm looking at the last eight months or so of expenditures, and I see it's roughly around 778,000 compared to an original budget of 2 million. I know that had a lot to do with, we didn't really have much snow this season, a lot of work outside.
Actually, not true.
Okay. It's not true.
Not true. But thank you for that lead-in, because I wanted to get to that very point. So let me clear, let me clear the record for all of the, the self-proclaimed expert weather people that we have. My family members included, by the way.
But just to that number, 2 million that I'm referring to, the 2,470,000 or so, how could you say for the last eight months, it's 778? It looks like you're trending, I mean, we're going into the, the spring, so you're not going to use a lot of that expenditures that you actually budgeted.
I'll be honest with you, I'm not quite sure what numbers you're referring to, but I will tell you-
Right here, it's on page-
But I will tell you that we have a very active-
It's not number.
-spring program, so all of the preparation-
That's right.
-for all of the athletic fields.
Carrie, what are those numbers at, as of December 31st, or?
The head of February.
Correct.
Eight months in.
Eight months in, yeah.
Right. The debt hasn't been filled yet. The fleet manager just started-
Right.
... his savings and his full-time discipline, vacant positions, the rodent material, I think that, that'll pick up probably-
That's because those bills haven't been paid yet, but the, but all the, the salt has been ordered. So I, I think there are some, there are some invoices and POs that need to clear, but I, I think Carrie's right. The only things that I can think of that haven't been executed according to the budget was, we didn't have the fleet manager until recently, so there's some salary from the beginning of the year for that. We had another vacancy for mechanic for a while. And then what was the other one you just mentioned, Carrie?
The cadet.
Oh, the cadet program.
So, so Carrie, to that point, we don't accrue for those expenditures? Wouldn't we accrue for those?
No, so the, no, not for the positions that haven't been hired yet.
What are, what are the other items that you mentioned?
So these are actual expenditures, so if there's encumbrance out there, it will be reflected in this report, because these are actual expenses, not, not encumbrance.
So there's probably a lot of encumbrances that's going to bring that number. Because I could tell you, I do my budget meetings every Monday-
So this is all cash basis, I presume, right?
Yeah. Yeah. We are, we're, with the exception of those couple items we just talked about, we're tracking right on where we, where we ought to be.
So I'm looking at this going like, wow, we have a lot of savings, and it's not true, because there's actual-
So let me get back to my, my weather educational session.
Okay, yeah. Education on the weather.
What I, what I want to clear the record on is this winter season, which by the way is not over yet, compared to last winter season. So, some numbers I'll, I'll put out just to sort of frame it. Last year, we had 21 storm events with a total accumulation of approximately 58.5 inches. We track every single storm, all the costs associated with it, direct labor, fuel, product, parts for breakdowns, everything. And we, I use a calculation, it's dollars per inch per lane mile, so that every storm is relative. It is a good way to allow us to compare the cost of an ice storm versus the cost of a blizzard versus the cost of something in the middle. It's a good and accurate industry way to, to do that. Our, our average cost per inch per lane mile last year was $64. This year, 15 storms, slightly less, but believe it or not, our accumulation was 41 inches. So we were, we were just above, our average is about 40 to 42 a year, so we're at or just above normal, even though it doesn't seem like it. And our average cost per inch per lane mile was $70. So we had more ice storms. So our storms this year cost more than last year. We put out more salt product this year than we put out last year. Both this year and last year, we put out more salt product than we budgeted for. We budgeted for 1,800 tons, and we put out 2,000 or 2,200 tons. So we literally have been living off our meager little reserve, because we, we kind of have this salt shed, it's our little bubble, right? So we're, we're trying to bring it in faster than we put it out, but we always have a little bit of a, something in our back pocket. Well, we've been putting it out more on average the last two years than we've been budgeting. So that's why you're going to see the increase in the amount of product that we think we'll need for next year. So I just wanted to clear the record on that, because I have people in my house, too, that think it wasn't a bad winter, and I have to remind them regularly that it, it was worse than we thought.
Thanks for-
Yeah, particularly, particularly for us as a, as a corporation where we're responsible for treating ice storms. You know, you don't treat an ice storm at your house necessarily, but we definitely have to do that here, and some of those storms were very expensive. So with that, unless there's any other questions, I'd like to move on to the facilities side This'll go a little bit quicker, because I spoke about all of the capital in total when I was talking capital earlier, so this is really just going to be a discussion of, of O and M. So this is the four-year comparison, and again, if you look to the, to the far right side, and you look down toward the bottom, you'll see significant increases in water, heat, and electricity. For the most part, everything else, as you look up that column, is, you know, at or less than 1% over last year. I alluded to it in my opening comments that, you know, the significant part of our increase is in utilities, and that's evident there. If we go to the next slide, you'll see a little bit more of a breakdown. This is the proposed 2020 budget by function, and again, the numbers play out the same. You'll see the increases down at the bottom to the far right, mostly in utilities, water, heat, and electricity. You'll see that reduction I talked about earlier, that negative 4.53%, that's that $19,000. That's that year-one warranty item that we're not assuming in this budget for 330 Park or 21 Southwood, but you'll see those numbers come back next year.
Excuse me, these, these numbers take into account new building technologies? Are these last year's estimates using the same square footage?
They do. So in the calculation of expected usage, it's worth noting that 330 Park Avenue and 21 Southwood Road, we did our own internal calculations based on what we anticipated utility usages to be, even assuming the new build-out. And we compared them with the ones that the two consultants that designed each building did, and I'm pleased to say that my team and the consultants came extremely close to one another on their, on their estimates. And why that is, and why the numbers are not, well, the numbers are higher because the unit costs are higher, but what you need to know about 330 Park Avenue is, it is now 100% climate-controlled, whereas the existing 330, or we'll call it the old 330, is not 100% climate-controlled. So the hallways are not treated, and that's a large amount of that space. So the offices are treated, but the hallways are not. So when you subtract the hallways out of that calculation, your treated area there is, is about what the treated area in the new building is. So just be, it's half the square footage, but it's double, double-treated, so the whole thing's 100% treated now. So I think if you, if you compare climate-treated area to climate-treated area, there's not as much of a difference as, as you might expect. So if we go on to the next slide, which is really a detailed description of the variances, you'll see electricity is up $16,000, and that's basically as a result of a rate increase. Keep in mind, rate is not, is a, is a twofold product. It's not just the, the cost to generate the electricity, but it's the cost to deliver the electricity to us, so there's a delivery cost as well. Those two things, you know, while our consumption is down, the delivery costs have gone up, so, you know, you don't necessarily realize as much of a savings as we, as we would hope to. On heat and energy, that's a 16% increase of approximately $17,000, and that's just a direct result of a rate increase. Water is up 22% or approximately $9,000, and that is a rate increase, as well as increase to certain areas being irrigated, namely Philly Park and Prosser Library, which had not in the past. And then the last item, which is a decrease, building maintenance, again, talked about it already, that's the reduced maintenance requirements for 330 Park and 21 Southwood, but again, those costs will likely increase going forward.
The, the two new buildings were discussed as to having solar facility, solar collectors, which would certainly have an impact on your, your increase, your increased electric costs. I know that's not up to you to make it happen this year, but it is, one of them is your building, and are you moving forward to pursue the solar solution?
Unfortunately, for 21 Southwood Drive, the replacement of the roof was value-engineered out of the project in an effort to save money. So if we were to do a solar array there, the logical place to put it would be on the roof. Because the roof isn't being replaced, I, I don't know, and I suspect that the roof probably couldn't, the old roof, existing roof, probably could not support a solar array. The new roof on the addition probably could, but the solar array was not included in the project. But, you know, we could look at it for the new additions, but if we were to try to do it for the entire building, actually, the bigger part of the building is going to remain, that building, I suspect, won't be able to support it. But we could do a ground-mounted one. 330 Park Avenue, quite honestly, I don't know if they designed the roof load to allow for it.
They did, I believe.
Well, certainly, think about it as we look forward to sustain, more sustainable solutions. Thank you.
Counselor, they did design 330 Park for future.
They did design 330 Park for future, if and when funds become available, to be able to put solar panels on that roof. Counselor DiLorenzo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. John, I just wanted to go back to the electricity for a minute. So, all those improvements we did with, is it Amaresco, if I'm-
Yes.
Right, you know, so even with all of those things in place, we still have an increase of 16,000?
Well, so, yeah, the short answer is yes. We saved a tremendous amount of money, and we continue to save money with Amaresco based on where we would have been had we not made those improvements. The energy savings that we're realizing, continuing to realize from the Amaresco effort is paying back the improvements that we had done as part of that project. In addition to that, when we did things like LED streetlight conversions, that saves on the energy consumption, but the delivery charge went up. So even though you're using less energy, they just raised the price of what it costs to bring less energy to you. So yes, we're saving money, but it's not a, you know, 100% or dollar-for-dollar savings. But had we not converted, and had we not done Amaresco, I can assure you that these prices would be much higher.
Okay, and then my last question is, my understanding about the solar array that's being built behind the Board of Education building is that we would be able to add on or have five- on or have five town buildings be part of that solar array? That we could get energy from that solar array? Was that correct?
No, it's not energy.
Please.
That was the original plan in the first solar array project. That never went anywhere. Then they changed it, and now we have a solar array where we get a reduction in our energy costs and then we, the rest of it goes to residents and people who bid for it and for, in particular, you know, lower-income folks.
Right, and that was still part of the original deal, that a portion of it would still have to go to residents, but I, my understanding was that five-town facilities would benefit by the use of that. Phil, am I wrong?
I think the priority went to the Board of Ed facilities. It then cascaded down to other town facilities, and then it cascaded further to a reserved cutout for individuals that qualified for a discount. And that was necessary in order to get the approval of the funding from the state. So it, the project hasn't been completed yet, obviously, so we don't know what's being generated, and we don't know what the residual amounts are going to be.
But it's anticipated that the Board of Ed building will have a big reduction in the cost of electricity?
Yes, exactly. And it already has with the carbon erase roof units.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So John, I was anxiously waiting to kind of get an update on the new building, the DPW building. I figured it would have been part of this presentation and given us a sense of where things are. And in a sense, some sort of projected savings, per se, overall, because you got to believe with this new building comes some savings. Because I know, when we went back to last year, we were talking about the reason for getting a better facility is that it was basically a lot of the equipments were out in the elements and it was causing a lot of issue. We had to maintain those equipments. So now with the new building, are you projecting savings that we don't have to maintain a lot of those equipments the way we would have?
I think savings are always sought when we do a project, but the primary impetus for the project was code and safety improvements. And that was OSHA code safety improvements, ADA code safety improvements. That was really what drove the project. Ideally, I would love to have had everything we had undercover. Unfortunately, in the process of prioritizing what the project could afford to go forward with, additional vehicle storage, lost ground to some of the employee spaces, male, female locker rooms, and the expansion of the fleet area took priority. So we will not necessarily have more coverage storage than we had, but we will have the ability to maintain the fleet better than we had, given that the space will be properly sized now, which, keep in mind, the building was built 60 years ago, so the sizes of the bays is significantly smaller than what it needs to be. So that is, that's an improvement. The new fuel island, huge code concern that we had. As you know, we were shut down by DED. They came in and red-tagged the tanks. That will be done as part of it. So those improvements are still part of it. But I'm sorry to say that we're not going to necessarily have more covered vehicle storage than we had when we started.
So my last question, based on a lot of the capital improvement projects, is there anything in here that didn't make your budget that we should be concerned about?
Well, of the 19 projects that were submitted, 19, or six are what you saw before you earlier. If you were to consider other projects, I would ask to give consideration to fully funding the equipment line item, which was partially funded. And these aren't necessarily in priority order. The chiller replacement here in Town Hall and the floor underneath it have been on the list for a while, but they're big-ticket items. The chiller, the Town Hall chiller and the floor underneath it, they've been, they're projects, two projects to go hand-in-hand, quite honestly. I would look at...
John, I don't understand what that is. Could you explain? Is that the, no, no, just want to know what it is.
Oh, chiller, air conditioner.
Okay, air conditioner, okay. Is that the reason why the mayor's always complaining that it's cold in here?
That's exactly right.
Okay. Just checking.
And then the urban forestry projects, there was a, we talked about asset management and doing analysis on roads and sidewalks earlier. One of the areas that we are behind on is getting a handle on our inventory and assessment for our urban forest. And there were two projects on the list for analysis of the rights-of-way and then a three-phased one to do all of the municipal properties, go through and systematically determine what trees are there and what conditions they're in. And get in the habit, like we do with sidewalks and roads, every year be able to tell what the conditions are. You know, you probably, if you've been paying attention to the news, just last night, I went to, or just yesterday, I went to a discussion session with the Connecticut Tree Protective Association. About 100 people got together and we were discussing the two epidemics that are coming across the state right now. Gypsy moss coming from the east and the emerald ashbore coming from the west, and poor little old Bloomfield smack right in the center. You know, so our trees are at risk from the moths as well as the ash trees from the emerald ashbore. Not knowing, standing here today in front of you, not knowing what we have for an inventory in number, species, size, or condition, I can't tell you what the order of magnitude of how important an issue is. But I will tell you that it is, if you talk to your counterparts on the far eastern part of the state or the far western part of the states, they'll tell you they're spending a lot of money on tree removal. Now, we spend money on tree removal, but that number is about to increase significantly. And without properly going through and doing an assessment on that inventory and knowing where it is and what its condition is, I can't tell you what that cost is going to be. We'll just sort of, we'll be reactionary. So if you were to look at things, and I know you've got a lot, I know there's a lot on the plate, and I know there's a lot of things to prioritize, but those are on the capital side, those are things to, I would ask you to think about.
Counselor Bob? Yeah, actually, I was going to, I want to come back to the urban forestry thing in a minute, but I was going to ask sort of a similar question because I noticed, not only here on projects that are, that were not funded for this year, but also in some projects, well, a lot of them, I guess, got transferred to 2021. There are quite a few what I would call sort of capital, you know, real capital maintenance items. Roof, we've got the, you've got the chiller, you've got the Town Hall annex roof replacement for $100,000. There was another chiller in Prosser, although, you know, we have to think carefully about what we do with Prosser at this point relative to down the road. Oliver Firehouse interior renovations. But there are quite a few capital projects. Out in 2021, '22, we have the Town Hall, I'm sorry, the Police Department boiler replacement. I guess we, you know...
And a Town Hall roof replacement.
And Town Hall roof replacement. But we've had sort of this general discussion, again, goes back to the Plan of Conservation and Development. There's a great graph in there, I think it's on page 92 of that, where it shows how much money you save in the long run if you do, if you do replacement and maintenance at the point it's required rather than letting things get away.
Correct.
So, I mean, for some of these larger ticket, you know, the roof replacement and chillers, boilers, that kind of thing, are we doing those in a timely enough fashion or should we be thinking about, you know, one of the things, should we think about doing them, not pushing them off? The finance subcommittee has also been looking at what things should we sort of build a fund up so that we'll be ready to do them when they're due? Do you have any comments on that?
Well, I will start by saying that a lot of the projects that you see in 1920, you have to go back and do the forensic analysis to find out when they first got there, because some of these projects have been submitted in '16 and they keep moving to the right and they're in 1920, so they look like they're next year or this year, when the reality is they've been there for a while. So that's why we're getting a little bit of a stacking.
Which makes the problem worse.
So it does. You know, can we, can we sit there and say, well, the Town Hall roof needs to be replaced? Well, we said it needed to be replaced five years ago, and we haven't done it. We can go through and do an analysis and say, you know, how much more life can we get out of it? We could certainly do that. I guess my concern is, because we have so many things stacked up right now, maybe a better way to approach it would be to look at what's in the next year and prioritize those and look at, you know, bonding opportunities or, you know, packaging them together. You know, I would look at, from a bonding perspective, I would look at some of the facility improvements as better candidates than, say, the roads. I would look at sidewalks being a better bond effort than the roads. I would prefer that the roads be a linear, funded, you know, slightly at or above, you know, the don't-lose-ground kind of rating, because, couple things to consider. One, roads are expensive. And two, if we were to go and do 15, $20 million a road at one time, it's hard to get that much roadwork done. You know, we can't support, even if, even if we're outsourcing the majority of the work, we still have to support it with traffic control or replacement of rings or storm order, catch basin replacement, things that we need to do to support that program, we quite honestly just couldn't keep up with it. I'd rather us stay on the track that we're on for that. Sidewalks, you could, you could take a chunk out of that and do a big portion. The facility stuff, the roofs, the chillers, those are nice, those are packaged, those have long lifespans. Those, I think, would be something that would lend themselves to bonding if you decided to go that way in the future.
And I just wanted to follow up with a, one question on the urban forest, well, one comment on the urban forestry, I guess, question with it. I actually had the, you know, advantage, I guess, of seeing your presentation at the Conservation Energy and Environment Committee where you went into more detail and talked about some of the, you know, some of the issues with the ashbore and so forth. And I guess the one thing I would like you to, you know, expand on a little bit here is, this would be, just be the first step of the inventory and ultimately, doing this would probably, and this is not a bad thing, but would also need to be estimated, it would probably lead to more work in the long term, which is not a bad thing. Because I think one of the things that came out of that discussion was, we would hope that, we would take the inventory to create a health management plan for our trees. It's not just about cutting them down, it's about making sure we know what species we have, we know which ones are vulnerable, we know which ones are more resilient, which ones are native. And the ones that are in great shape, we want to keep that way so that we would have more of a management thing. So I think with that project, what I'd really be interested in is also knowing, okay, if step one is to do the inventory, and I understand why that's where it needs to start, what would we expect two or three years out, and what kind of personnel would we need to add potentially in-house? And I know we had some discussions about that.
That's a good question. I'll take a note on that. I'll talk with Beta and I'll ask them if they've, if they're a step or two further with another community and if they could give me a inclination or a ratio, you know, based on the size of their inventory versus the size of our potential inventory and where has that gone with them? Because you're right, you know, if we do the assessment and we know where all the trees are and we know what the condition is, that's just the beginning, because now that could lead to something much more expensive. My intent is not to create another road sidewalk-type asset where now we've got to chase it with dollars. But I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that we've got a serious problem with tree survivability in the state right now. And quite honestly, you know, if you turn to me and say, you know, how many do we have and what's their condition, I really can't tell you. So at a minimum, I was looking at this effort just to get there, a little bit afraid of what we might find when we get there and what the cost to sustain this going forward. So I was, I was sort of just attacking this one step at a time. But that's a good point, and I'll, and I'll talk with Beta and I'll see if I can, I can forecast where this, where this might end up. So you're, I hope I answered your question on the capital side and on the, on the operating side. I would just humbly request additional support. You know, there were requests, as I'm sure other departments did as well, for positions. I'm sure there was a lot of debate about it, you know, maintainers, horticulturists. That's on my Christmas list. But that's, that's, that's all I have. That concludes my brief. I thank you for your time. I hope I've answered all your questions.
Just a few more thanks. On page 134, you talk about Bank of America lease payments for energy performance contracts. Can you explain what that is?
Right, that's the Amaresco lease payment. So twice a year, we pay back Amaresco for the improvements that they made in town. We make the payments, I believe it's in December and sometime in the spring.
Okay, and that's how many more years to go?
Good question.
12?
I was going to say 10. How about we shoot for 11? Somewhere between 10 and 12.
Over the 10. Also, on a number of, on a number of the charts, you show union employees and no increase in their, in their expected cost. And I know we're about to run the process...
That's because the cost of, that's because the cost of living is not covered in my presentation, it's covered in the fixed cost presentation.
Okay, okay. I didn't, I didn't understand. I thought that, I was wondering why not these, these numbers are acceptable on that basis. And I also see you're still using a lot of Roundup in the town, and I was hoping we could see a reduction of some of that. I know it then has to be replaced by manpower, but perhaps the cadet program could be a big help there, especially, I noticed in the Philly Pond area, you called for use there. Again, sustainability, I think, is an issue that we want to look toward in the future. Okay. May pass for now.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming out.
Any other questions?
No, but a couple people had questions.
So, so how the facilitation has it going? If you would like to make a comment, you can do so. We're not questioning the public works department at all, but if you have comments, you have a three-minute rule, you can make any comment you wish, as long as you're decent, respectable, and kind.
John, I think you guys should stay to the mirror.
If you'd like to hear the comments. No questions, but comments can be made. Three minutes?
Three minutes, decent, respectable, and kind, please.
Hi, Hall Steen Graham Days, 89 Wintonbury Avenue, here in town. Going back to the discussion regarding the sidewalks. I recall, and I have sidewalks in front of my property, which is a handicap, but in any case, I received a notice from the town, maybe about 10 years ago, that the sidewalk was my responsibility. I did, I received a written notice from the town saying that the sidewalk was my responsibility and that there was a certain section of my sidewalk that I should replace. And I remember getting quotes in reference to it, but I did not proceed in terms of getting it replaced. And so I was just a little surprised tonight when there was a discussion and I learned that it was the town's responsibility.
We'll look into that and I'll get back to you.
John DeHoyas, 33 Woodland Avenue. So basically, I'm here as a representative of the Beautification Committee. We're really hoping to press and urge the Horticulturist position in particular. Just a quick anecdote, years ago when I was a fresh-faced landscaper, had a crew that I was working with, my boss's boss came up to me and said, "What are you responsible for?" And I said, "Well, everything, I have to be responsible for everything." He looks at me, he says, "No, you're responsible for 5%. The crew can do an amazing job. Your responsibility is that 5% to make sure that each and every property is polished. You're there to make sure the details are done. The guy, I don't want to see you on a mower, I don't want to see you on a weed whacker, I want to see you walking the property, making sure that things are done correctly. And let the guys do what they do best." The DPW has a lot of responsibility. I mean, from the looks of that budget, from road improvements alone to all the other responsibilities, having the responsibility of all the fussy stuff of horticulture put on them is not necessarily fair to them, just as much it wasn't fair to me to have the responsibility of all the bulk of the work done when I was on a job. The Horticulturist position is a scalpel. It is those 5% details that are going to make the difference when a new person comes into town and says, "Do I want to buy a home here?" into town and says, "Do I want to buy a home here? Do I want to set up a business here?" And having somebody that can be flexible, because when they're doing their schedule, they're looking six months in advance. Well, spring may be coming early this year, but the time that they've allotted is this particular week, regardless of when spring comes. So, not that they aren't capable, they are capable, but the requirements for that 5% detail, I think, is unfair to ask of them to, to take on with everything else that they have to juggle, because the DPW, I think, I believe, does an excellent job with the resources that they have. Having one person doing those things that will have the flexibility, have the ability to do the necessary fussy stuff, like I said, to accomplish the, the, the work that needs to get done, so that we can attract those people, because it's that little 5% that people notice. People like to buy a new house because it has stainless steel appliances, not because the structure of the house is, is good. They're like, "Ooh, nice and shiny things." Well, that's that 5% in the town that a Horticulturist would be able to see and fix and make sure it's maintained properly. I, I believe I've, unless the rest of you have any additional comments, I hope I covered everything, but thank you very much for your consideration.
Well, thank you very much for coming out. Please be reminded that we get to do another budget session on Thursday at 7:00 p.m. Also, please...
On Thursday, we will hear the budget from Public Safety. Please be reminded that on this Friday evening at 7:00 p.m., we do have two candidates for the job of Town Manager. They will both make a 10-minute presentation. After their presentations, we will have an opportunity to interact with them, ask them some questions, get to know them a little bit better. If for some reason you cannot be here on Friday at 7:00, we will do it all again on Saturday morning at 9:00 a.m. We're asking you to please come out, be a part of the process, and lend your voice. Also, please note that on April 3rd at 6:45 p.m., the Bloomfield Fire will have a election for Commissioner. That's if you're in Fire District Number 3. Please keep that in mind. I know it's requiring time, but it's so important. Please be a part of the process. Thank you so very much for being with us on this evening. Have a good night.